Okay, it is four o'clock and I will call the special meeting of the Salina City Commission to order. With that, I would ask staff for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes.
Thank you. With that, we will have roll call.
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Franz.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Would those that are able please stand for a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move into administration, 3.1.
Item 3.1, election of temporary chair.
Yes. Due to a conflict of interest on both items that are on the agenda with my business, I will be recusing myself. So with the absence of Vice Mayor Hodges, we need to elect a temporary chair.
I would move that we nominate Trent Davis to serve as temporary chair for the duration of the meeting today.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Commissioner Davis to act as the temporary chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. So with that, I will leave the room and I will turn it over to Commissioner Davis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our business is fairly short and direct this afternoon. There is a request for executive session.
Chair.
Presiding officer. I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss the subject of a specific economic development prospect and its project identified as Project Gemini based upon the need to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships pursuant to KSA The open meeting will resume in this room at 4:15.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to recess into executive session for the reasons so stated. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 3-0 and there is possible action to follow which we will.
Correct. We will head and adjourn into 107B today and we do have outside parties that will be joining us as subject matter experts. Mitch Robinson from the Salina Community Economic Development Organization and Sarah Steele from Gilmore and Bell, our bond counsel, as well as city attorney, legal counsel Greg Banksen and myself.
Thank you.
the city manager will take us through this.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. As you know, we, with the assistance of the Salina Community Economic Development Organization, we responded to a request for proposals from and entered into, I guess what you could call negotiations with an economic development prospect and those deliberations have taken place in executive session pursuant to the authority and statutes that you just referenced, 754319B4, based on the need to discuss those items, data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships. And the discussions related to this particular project have been and continue to be referenced as Project Gemini. So a key consideration on the part of Project Gemini regarding their possible selection of Salina is the city's willingness to afford their project a 100% property tax abatement for 10 years through the authorization of industrial revenue bonds in the amount of $20 million. The bonds and interest would be a limited obligation of the city payable from proceeds from the company in the form of lease payments. They would not be an obligation of the city. They would be purchased by the company, having the net effect of the company holding both the credit and the liability for the bonds. The net effect of the industrial revenue bonds as proposed would be to afford the company a property tax abatement as well as sales tax exemptions on project-related items such as construction materials, building furnishings, and equipment while the project is being constructed. In addition to local incentives, they have sought and will likely receive additional economic development incentives from the state of Kansas. This, as you know, this prospective business conducted a competitive RFP process considering Salina, among other locations in North America, as well as international locations. So the action item that's on your agenda and attached to this blue sheet is a resolution of advisability that more formally communicates and formalizes your receptivity as the governing body to proceeding with the issuance of the industrial revenue bonds as described. Following city commission action and confirmation and public announcement by Project Gemini, the name of the company and additional project details currently subject to the statutory exemption related to financial affairs and trade secrets will be able to be disclosed. As far as a fiscal note, as previously noted, the proposed industrial revenue bond structure would afford them a 100% property tax abatement for 10 years with the exception of preserving the applicable school district capital outlay property tax levy up to eight mills, depending on what they've actually levied. It would also exempt the project from sales tax on all of the costs of the project related to items such as construction materials, building furnishings, and equipment. As you may know, sales tax exemptions already exist for machinery and equipment through the state of Kansas, so quite a bit of their inventory and expenses would already be sales tax exempt. And the sales tax exemption terminates upon completion of the construction project, so it doesn't run for the same duration as the property tax abatement. So I'll walk you through the resolution as well, but your options are that we've identified are to approve the resolution as presented, approve it with amendments as you deem appropriate. You could postpone consideration to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding any additional information or amendments you'd like to consider, or you could vote to deny the resolution, possibly resulting in Project Gemini not being undertaken in Salina or the need for further renegotiation of the project. I failed to mention, I mentioned that the Salina Community Economic Development Organization provided assistance and worked this project. They have provided recommendation, a recommendation which is attached as well. So they met this morning in a special meeting and the very last item in the attachment is documentation of their recommendation that the Salina Community Economic Development Organization Board of Directors' recommendation of the city's approval of $20 million of industrial revenue bonds for the project. Right before that item is the resolution itself. It's Resolution Number 207864, a resolution of advisability. There's a handful of wheresses there that describe the intent of promoting, stimulating, developing economic prosperity in the city. The industrial revenue bonds to pay the cost of certain facilities facilitate that purpose. The calling out of the $20 million of industrial revenue bonds, the finding and determining it to be advisable and in the interest of the city and its inhabitants to do so. And then the subsections call out your approval of the project, your intent to issue bonds, your provision for the bonds, subject to the conditions of the resolution. The city is expressing its intent to issue the bonds, to provide for the lease, and to effect the foregoing published notice in public hearing and adopt resolutions and ordinances as needed. Conditions to the issuance that are called out are the receipt and approval of an application, an appropriate application for the issuance of bonds, passage and publication of the ordinance necessary, agreement by the city and the company and the purchaser of the bonds on mutually acceptable terms, mutually acceptable conditions, and the company's compliance with those requirements. The sale of the bonds could be in series, it may not be entirely in one $20 million issuance. The ad verum tax abatement is subject to those conditions mentioned previously, but it calls out the 100% tax abatement and the duration of 10 years. Provides notice that the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish appropriate notice of the intent to issue the bonds and enter into a lease and to publish a notice of public hearing with respect to granting a complete or partial property tax exemption. It specifies or clarifies that this is a limited obligation of the city. The bonds and interest would be a special limited obligation payable solely out of the amounts derived by the city under a lease agreement with the company and the bonds are not a general obligation of the city. And then it calls out, it authorizes city council and Gilmore and Bell, our bond counsel, together with officers and employees of the city to work with the company and their council to prepare for submission to the city, all the documents necessary to take this action. I typically wouldn't read to you in that much detail, but in light of how this has been handled in executive session and this being the first opportunity in open session, I wanted to be sure to go over it in greater detail. Mitch Robinson from the SEEDO is here. Sarah Steele with Gilmore and Bell is here as well and can answer detailed questions about the IRB issuance. And with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Franz.
At one time, and you forgive me if I'm behind the curve on this, but at one time the city of Salina had a policy regarding issuance of industrial revenue bonds and as my poor memory informs me, that was done in conjunction with Saline County and had to do with thresholds and so on to achieve certain amounts of tax abatements. Is this in compliance with that policy? And I honestly do not remember if that was only for issuances that involved being located in the county also and since this is coming into the city, it may not be applicable. But I want to ask the question.
The resolution that you're referring to does have employment levels and investment levels. This project exceeds both of those. It also provides discretion to the city commission and the governing body to deviate from those if you deem it to be appropriate. I'm not sure if you caught all that, but the resolution that you're referring to includes investment thresholds and employment thresholds and this project far exceeds those. The IRB issuance will also involve finalization of a cost-benefit analysis which has been initiated. So as part of the next steps that will actually formalize this action, we'll be bringing all that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Would that include the performance agreements listed in section six?
Yes.
The same type?
Yep.
Commissioner Ryan.
No questions.
I just have one just for anyone who may be watching on television concerned about our financial health. This is a limited obligation of the city but not a general obligation. Could you just explain to these people's?
Sure. In fact, I may call on Steele to do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it is a limited obligation of the city payable solely from any rents received from the company. So the company is the entity obligated to make payments. City is prohibited from making any payments on this even if it were to go into default. So the city is in no way responsible for any payments, doesn't count as debt of the city in any way.
Is there another explanation for why it's still a limited? I think the word obligation will probably make people nervous.
Certainly, and it's simply a limited obligation to the extent the city receives funds from the company, they're obligated to make payment to the owner of the bonds. That's all.
Okay. You might elaborate on who the owner of the bonds will be.
Well, the intent is that the company would buy the bonds, so they will be the obligor to make payment, but they're paying themselves on the bonds. So it's certainly allowed under state law and so it's not in, really, it's not a true debt on their books. It's just a mechanism that allows them to move forward in getting the property tax abatement.
Just curious, are we allowed to charge a fee for handling the money?
The question is whether we can charge administrative fees.
Certainly, the city may charge an administrative fee. It is to be limited to a figure that represents the value that the city puts into administering this every year and those funds are to be used for future economic development. I typically see in my practice anywhere from $1,000 to $3,000 per year on those administrative fees and that certainly can be charged by the city if they so choose.
All right. So we won't balance the budget off that fee then?
Sorry.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the public or any other comments from those involved with the project? All right. And we have some choices that have been recommended for us.
Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 207864.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 20-7864. No other discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 3-0. And we now can move to 3.3.
Clerk is going to read that. 3.3 is a request for executive session, financial affairs or trade secrets. Chairman, I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 25 minutes to discuss the subject of a special economic development prospect and its project identified as Project Rise based upon the need to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorship pursuant to KSA 75-4319B4. The open meeting will resume in this room at 4:55.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session to discuss economic development prospect relating to financial affairs or trade secrets. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 3-0. And we will meet back here at 4:55 at which there may.
May have action on that one?
May have action on this one as well.
Correct. And once again, we'll adjourn into 107B. Joining you as subject matter experts will be Mitch Robinson from the Economic Development Organization, Sarah Steele from Gilmore and Bell, Tim Rogers from the Salina Airport Authority, Mr. Banksen and myself.
All right, thank you. All right. session. We will now move to item 3.3A.
3.3A, possible action to follow including possible consideration of a resolution relating to Project Rise determining the advisability of and the city's intent to issue its industrial revenue bonds to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping facilities, determining the associated ad valorem property tax abatement, approving the application for Salina Economic Development Incentive Program funds to be used as a match for a Federal Economic Development Administration grant, and approving payment from the city's general fund as a match for a Kansas Department of Transportation Economic Development grant for street-related improvements.
This is great.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Some of this report is going to sound very similar, but I want to be clear, this is a separate and distinct economic development prospect that we've also been working and by coincidence, they all came together in the same day in the same week. So as the city clerk read, this is a resolution of advisability similar to the one you just acted on. It's been brought together with the assistance of both the Salina Community Economic Development Organization and the Salina Airport Authority, Mitch Robinson with the EDO and Tim Rogers from the Airport Authority. Once again, we responded to a request for proposals and we entered into preliminary negotiations with an economic development prospect. Those deliberations were in executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B4 based on the fact that they related to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships. And discussions related to this particular project have been and continue to be referenced as Project Rise. Key considerations for this project was their possible selection of the city and their willingness to do so based on the city's willingness to afford 100% property tax abatements for 10 years through the authorization of industrial revenue bonds. In this particular case, the resolution of advisability that you have before you is for $600 million of industrial revenue bonds. Then additionally, the other aspects are city providing local match funds to two different grant applications, providing $650,000 of Salina Economic Development Program funds to match, be the local match for an EDA grant totaling $9.9 million. And that 9.9 is inclusive of the city's $650,000. The second application is the city pledging $900,000 of city funds as a local match to a KDOT, Kansas Department of Transportation grant totaling $3 million inclusive of the $900,000. The $3 million funding from the KDOT program would improve roads in the community adjoining the site of this project or the campus for this project. In addition to the local incentives and the EDA and KDOT applications that I noted, Project Rise has sought and will likely secure additional economic development incentives from the state of Kansas. So once again, the net effect of the use of industrial revenue bonds is to afford the company the described property tax abatement as well as sales tax exemptions on project-related items such as construction materials, building furnishings, and equipment. This prospective business conducted a competitive RFP process as well considering Salina, among other locations available to them in the United States. The attached resolution of advisability more formally and publicly communicates the governing body's receptivity to proceeding as described with the issuance of IRBs and application for EDA and KDOT grants. Following city commission action and confirmation and a public announcement by Project Rise, the name of the company and additional project details could then be disclosed that are currently subject to the statutory exemptions that I mentioned. With respect to a fiscal note, as we've discussed, the industrial revenue bond approach affords them a 100% property tax abatement for 10 years with the exception of that capital outlay mill levy applicable for the school district in which they're located. And it also then affords them a sales tax exemption for project items while the project is under construction. As I previously noted, there are many things in machinery and equipment that are already exempt from personal property tax as well as sales tax just by the tax structure of the state of Kansas today. So additional local funds in the amount of $1,550,000 would be pledged, $650,000 of that coming from the city's Economic Development Fund, $900,000 of that coming from the city's street budget. And the intent there is to use those funds to attempt to leverage $11,350,000 of grant funds from collectively from KDOT and the Federal Economic Development Administration. So with respect to this item, the options that we've identified for your consideration are approve Resolution 207865. You could approve it with amendments as you deem appropriate. You could postpone consideration to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments that you'd like for your consideration, or you could vote to deny the resolution, possibly resulting in Project Rise not being undertaken in Salina or the need for further renegotiation of the project. As far as attachments, there is a resolution of advisability. The format is identical to the one we just discussed for Project Gemini with the exception of $600 million of industrial revenue bond financing being authorized or at least consented to. And then I did want to call your attention to some additional sections that were added. Section 10 entitled Federal Economic Development Administration Grant Application, it calls out that the Salina Community Economic Development Organization Board of Directors has recommended and the governing body of the city has determined and declares the intent of the city to approve the Salina Economic Development Incentive Program application for Project Rise of $650,000 which will be used as a local match for Federal Economic Development Administration grant application in the amount of $900,000 inclusive of the city's contribution. And then section 11 is the Kansas Department of Transportation Economic Development Grant Application. Once again, the EDO Board of Directors recommended and this declares that the city determines and declares its intent to provide up to $900,000 as a local match for KDOT grant funds totaling $3 million inclusive of the city's contribution. Then attached to that are two documents from the EDO, one being documentation of their recommendation of their support for the $600 million in industrial revenue bonds, the other, I'm sorry, there's actually three. The second one being their recommendation for the $900,000 local match for the $3 million KDOT grant, and the last one being their recommendation for the $650,000 local match for the $9.9 million EDA grant application. So with that, there is another action item that we'll cover next, but with respect to the resolution of advisability, the issuance of $600 million of industrial revenue bonds, the authorization of $650,000 of local matching funds for the EDA grant, and $900,000 of matching funds for the $3 million KDOT grant. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner, is there a question?
I have none.
Nope.
And could you, two questions. Is there any statutory limit to the amount of IRBs that a city can have outstanding at any one time?
No.
Yep, thank you.
For those listening at home, Ms. Steele answered that question and the answer was no.
All right. And just so folks won't worry about where we're getting our money for the match, that is from our current street?
Yes, it's coming from two places. We have an economic development fund where we set aside an allocation from the sales tax proceeds each year, so that's the source of the $650,000 for the EDA grant. And then the intention would be to allocate $900,000 of our annual street funding to this particular grant so that we can do the $3 million worth of street work in proximity to this project.
All right, thank you.
And your question reminded me, we covered it in the last resolution, but once again, these industrial revenue bonds would be a limited obligation. They would not, they would be a lease format like we discussed before where the proceeds from the lease are the basis of the payments and the city would not have any further obligations.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the public? Is there any action to be taken from the commission?
And Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Resolution Number 207865.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 20-7865. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 3-0. And we will now move to 3.3. And we will now move to 3.3B.
Item 3.3B, possible consideration of an ordinance on first reading, unconditionally approving the issuance of general obligation bonds by the Salina Airport Authority for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital improvements located at the Salina Regional Airport and Airport Industrial Center.
And Mr. Scragg again.
Thank you, Commissioners. This also relates to Project Rise. You may recall that on occasion, as the need arises, the city commission authorization for issuance of debt on the part of the Salina Airport Authority is necessary by way of ordinance. That's what this action item is today. The Airport Authority was established in 1965. They have statutory authority to issue their own general obligation bonds, but it does provide that if they desire to issue those bonds, they shall adopt a resolution setting forth the principal amount to be issued and shall forward a copy of such resolution to the mayor of the city. The mayor shall present such resolution to the governing body for approval or disapproval, and then you as the governing body have three choices. You could disapprove the authority's resolution by ordinance, you could unconditionally approve the authority's resolution by ordinance, or you could approve the authority's resolution and authorize publication of notice of their intent to issue general obligation bonds subjecting it to a referendum election if a protest petition is signed by not less than 20% of the qualified voters of the city and filed within 15 days. On July 29th of this year, the Airport Authority Board of Directors adopted the attached resolution approving the issuance of not to exceed $2.2 million of temporary general obligation bonds to pay the cost of certain capital improvements located at the Airport Industrial Center, including but not limited to acquisition of 23.29 acres of real estate for the Project Rise Economic Development Project. Also on that date, they authorized the offering for sale of taxable general obligation temp notes on the part of the Salina Airport Authority subject to your approval, and the proposed financing has been developed and structured with the assistance of their public financial advisors, which is Stiefel Nicholas and Company and the law firm of Gilmore and Bell. So at this point, and with respect to the fiscal note, while the authority, their proposed general obligation financing is backed by the full faith and credit of the Airport Authority, it specifically provides that those obligations shall not constitute a debt or an obligation of the city which established the Airport Authority. So the bond issue proposed does not count towards the city's bonded indebtedness limitations. The Airport Authority has advised that there will not be an immediate impact on their mill levy for 2020 or 2021. The temp notes will be sold with a three-year term, and then the final decision on the paying off of those or long-term financing of the acquisition will be made during their 2022 budget preparation. The Airport Authority has multiple grant opportunities that they're pursuing. The timing of this project necessitated bringing all, taking this action and pursuing the temp notes at this time, and the maximum mill levy that would be used if necessary for that temp note debt would be .175 mils. And the authority also, the Airport Authority also advised that their mill levy for, the 2020 mill levy for their 2021 budget is estimated to be 4.980, and their current levy is 5.372. So it does not represent or cause the need for an immediate mill rate increase. So with respect to your options, you could adopt the ordinance 20-11038 unconditionally approving the issuance of the general obligation bonds. You could disapprove the authority's resolution, having the net effect of not being able to make the land acquisition and possibly jeopardizing the Project Rise project. Or you could approve the authority's resolution and authorize publication of a notice which would then subject it to a referendum election, a protest petition process and the possibility of a referendum election. In light of the project and the benefits of the project, as well as the financial information that's been provided by the Airport Authority, staff recommends option number one, which would be to approve ordinance number 20-11038 on first reading today. And in light of the timeline of the project, if you approve it on first reading, we will add second reading to your agenda for August 10th, which will be next Monday, and that will be the final action on that, this ordinance. So with that, there is attached the ordinance itself, as well as the resolution from the Airport Authority. Tim Rogers is here on behalf of the Airport Authority and be happy to try to answer any questions or quickly hand them off to Tim, depending on how hard they are. Questions?
Any questions? I would like to express my thanks to all the parties on both sides of this. I know how diligently the city's own staff and the EDO and Tim Rogers with the Airport Authority have worked, but I think that the people in the project, the company that we're working with have also worked very hard for this, so we appreciate everybody's efforts and our legislators and the Department of Commerce and the state of Kansas for all helping in this regard.
Yeah, I think Mr. Rogers described this as a project four years in the making. It's been quite an effort.
Just one question. I noticed the ordinance listed not to exceed $2 million of general obligation bonds in the Airport Authority, 2004 lists 2.2 million. Is that just a typographical?
That's a good point. Or is there a 10% cost that's not? The Airport Authority's resolution has 2.2 million and the ordinance has 2 million?
Yeah.
Which is the correct number?
The 2.2 would be-
Okay, so-
So that should be-
To make sure the funds are available for late purchases.
That's a good catch, Commissioner Davis.
I was looking for a 10% fee or something somewhere, and I just couldn't find it.
So the ordinance should be amended to reflect the 2.2 million number throughout.
Is that, then that would be in the first whereas paragraph and section one?
It's listed three times, yeah.
First two whereas's and section one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve ordinance number 20-11038 on first reading with the correction of the $2 million figure to reflect the $2,200,000 at those three locations.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 20-11038 with the corrections of the bond amount to not exceed $2.2 million. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries three to zero. And unless there is some other business, entertain a motion to adjourn.
That's all I got today.
Assuming there's a second, so all in favor of adjournment?
I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, and we'll see you on Monday.
Thank you, Commissioners.